I'm from Pueblo, educated in Colorado universities. My undergrad degrees from DU in economics and my master's is from CU in public administration. And I care deeply about giving back and engaging in community. That's been my life work, life's work, and I have a track record of this. And now I feel like it's my time to be a candidate and to pursue a seat at the council table where I can really give and contribute in a totally different way. So I'm bringing to this 30 years of professional experience. I've had a successful career in local government. By the city of Boulder as a project administrator. And I worked with council members like Alan Feinberg and I worked with staff members like Susan Osborne and Alan Bowles in the city attorney's office and was a part of the community of that time that tried to make great things happen in Boulder. No different than today, right? We're trying to make great things happen here in Boulder. So when I left the city of Boulder, I was the assistant city manager and worked for the city for nine years, went to work in the private sector to gain that kind of experience, working for an engineering, environmental engineering firm on issues throughout the country and in the nonprofit arena. I've served on nonprofit boards and community service and have been a leader on boards and commissions throughout the state. So I'm running because I really believe, back to my point, it is all about community and it's about the issues of affordable housing, the goals, the targets, the sense of urgency, and it's not enough for me to just have mine. It's about the economic and fiscal health of our city, it's about climate crisis and environmental issues, and I look forward to talking more about these things this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Benita.
Hi, my name is Susan Peterson. I am a recently retired engineer. I'll tell you a little bit about my career and then a little bit about myself and a little bit about why I'm running and then I hope you hear more about the visions that I might have for the city in my closing statement and throughout the questions. I'll just pause for a second. Thank you. Good, it gives me a chance to breathe a little bit. Thanks Fran for that breather. So again, I spent most of my career in engineering and executive management. I started as a structural engineer. I studied civil engineering at Michigan State where I was lucky enough to have a cooperative education grant from NOAA. So our national labs are near and dear to my heart. They really helped me put myself through school. I moved to Denver in 1978 when I got out of school. I chose Denver after driving all around the country as a place not only of opportunity but great beauty and I loved to ski. So all those big buildings that were going up in Denver at the time were a great opportunity for a structural engineer. But after about five years, I got a little bored with that and I started, I got into a new industry, writing software for computer-aided design for architects and engineers, and that got me more and more into technology. As I moved into management, I then went back to DU and got an executive MBA and found that I really liked being in leadership positions and that took me to yet another industry called electronic design automation where I spent a lot of the rest of years of my life. It's basically software that electrical engineers use to design integrated circuits. Even today, my mother says, oh, she does something with computers so you don't have to really worry about what that is. But it did give me a lot of exposure to high technology, it gave me a lot of exposure to lots of places around the world, and I was always thankful that I had Boulder to come home to. I moved to Boulder in 1994 when I took a job here and about that time, my son was two years old and I wanted to raise him in a place where I felt he could ride his bike to soccer practice. Because I was a single mom, I knew I was going to be a single mom and it was going to be important for him to get himself around and that worked out just great. He's 26 now and a lot taller than me and it's just been a great place to raise him and it's one of the reasons I feel invested in making sure it continues to be a great place to raise our kids. Along the way, I worked for a couple of Boulder companies too. There's a company called Pico Second Pulse Labs which is still around. It was started by some folks from NIST. I was the vice president of sales and marketing at that company. When telecom imploded, I, like Bob, was like, what can I do to really do something that moves the world in a direction that I feel strongly about? So I found a group of young guys that were just starting a company called Renewable Choice Energy. We made a market out of selling renewable energy certificates to not only individuals but to companies. And I guess my proudest legacy there is that eventually that business sales program that I started right here at home with Sounds True and White Wave eventually resulted in us selling renewable energy certificates to Whole Foods nationwide, which at the time was the biggest such sale ever. The why I'm running for city council shorthand that I tell my friends is that I don't want my future grandkids to say grandma was just sitting around drinking margaritas while Boulder went down the tubes.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Wallach. I want to put in a kind word for drinking margaritas. And for those of you who've heard all of this before, my condolences, but you came here voluntarily and this is not price. I'm running for council because I wanted to contribute to the debate and resolution of some of the issues that are affecting our community and that have proven to be so divisive. I first started coming here about 40 years ago as a climber. Fell in love with the city and I've always been in love with Boulder. It was many years later before we could move here, but when we had the opportunity, we did so, my wife and I. My background was first as a lawyer for a number of years and I later transitioned into real estate development in the private sector. I worked in a particular specialty which was adaptive reuse, generally in landmark districts. Many people don't like to do that sort of thing, it's a rather specialized field, but I was happy to do it because I revered old buildings and a sense of history and repurposing them for modern uses, I thought was a worthwhile endeavor. I'm very pleased to say that in that career, I never once demolished a building and I never had to build a new glass and steel tower for development purposes. Everything was historic preservation and adaptive reuse. I think that background has equipped me to deal with some of the land use and housing issues that are so prominent in this community. They have become very divisive issues and I think I would offer a fairly reasoned and sober approach to them. And I think of myself as a problem solver. The first time you put a hammer to a wall in a 120-year-old building, that's all you're doing is solving problems because everything is unexpected and you deal with the unknowns in sequence. So I think I have a background that will enable me to contribute to how we move forward on those issues, whether it's CU South, Alpine Balsam, and density and growth and on and on. You'll hear a little more this afternoon about my specific views on some of those issues, but for the moment, I think that gives you some background on me and what I'm about. And by the way, I hope you all take a look at my website, wallachfromcouncil.com, where you'll get to know a little more about me and what I stand for. And I hope that we can all work together to bring Boulder into the future that it needs and deserves. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Corina?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Corina Holca and I'm very impressed with all what I heard about all the candidates. I'm very pleased that we have such great candidates for these elections. And I think it's going to be really tough for you to choose, but well, I'm going to tell you something about myself. My name is Corina Holca and I'm originally from Peru. I moved to the United States in 2006 to Minnesota after I won the green card lottery. I've been living in Boulder for five years. I went to the University of Trujillo in Peru, so I'm a teacher and I'm a mother of two, my two beautiful kids. This has been for me a very steep curve of learning. I'm still learning a lot of things and there's a ton to learn and it's been hard work too. I mean, I was getting really crazy trying to read all these things and, you know, getting to know more about the problems of the city and all that. I live in a rental apartment in Aglenwood and 30th and this is one of the things that got me into running for council. So the location where I live is located within the opportunity zone and, you know, this program that is about to start here in Boulder and that is going to cause a lot of displacement for people that are living here, families, small businesses, I think it doesn't fit in Boulder. So I'm here because I think that I can bring a fresh perspective to councils since I have a different background and I'm an immigrant and I think it would be nice to have a variety of council members in council. So, well, this is about me and if you want to know more, you guys can go to my website and check it out and I hope I can respond to the questions. And one thing that I can promise is that I would really love to work for the community, for the people of Boulder. Because I think that you guys, we are all, we share this love for our community, for our city, for the open space, and we all want to work together to solve these problems that we're facing now. Thank you.
Thank you all. That was an impressive start. Now, context. Okay. Let's start with this one. What is your view of the appropriate future of the land known as CU South? How would you balance the need for effective flood mitigation and the university's drive to develop as much as possible on this site?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, yeah, thank you. And Benita?
Yeah.
It's yours.
So here's something about me that you should know. I like to have the experience of checking something out. So yesterday, I walked that site and now have a much better sense of the dynamic of the land and the terrain, the residential elements that come into play. It is, like many of these other issues that we're facing, a very complex project. I think we have to recognize that the university is the developer of that land and we need to be a partner in that and we need to preserve and protect the lands that we have control of, and so I think that's very important. The other issue related to the, is flood mitigation and addressing the life safety issues of the residents of that area, and I'm an advocate for doing that as soon as possible. I have been, and I've said before, that I'm a supporter of variant two as the option, one of the options going forward.
I'm going to stand up so I'm at least as tall as Adam Swetlik is sitting down. So as I mentioned earlier, my first career was in civil engineering, so I approached this problem very much from the mindset of a civil engineer and fluid dynamics and water and hydrology issues. And to me, the number one priority should be public safety. And when I take a look at the variants that are out there right now and some of the other variants that have been discussed.
This happens to you.
It's just universal, it's my special time, don't worry. I want to give you a little civil engineering demonstration. This is about how much what they call freeboard or space there is for water to flow under 36. 36, the main transportation corridor in and out of our city, the corridor that's so important in the event of emergency or natural disaster. And CDOT's efforts to protect that byway for water are so important. If any of you during the flood saw the water leaping over Broadway at Broadway and Iris because it didn't have enough egress to get underneath, you know how important that is to 36. The freeboard or space for water to run under 36 with variant two looks something like That doesn't seem like a very good solution for public safety. So I've taken a look at the variants that are out there, I've watched the process. I feel like the thing that's lacking is we have lots of subgroups getting together, but it doesn't feel like we've really had a commission where we're talking to CDOT and the city and CU and the neighborhoods and open space and the natural wildlife resources people, all at the table at the same time to come up with something that works for all of us. Because I believe that if we all put our heads together, we can certainly figure out a way to protect our public safety and satisfy some of CU's desires at the same time.
Thank you, Susan. Mark?
I think you have to start with first principles and that for me is flood mitigation and providing the affected neighborhoods with a degree of safety. But having said that, I think there's a tendency here to ignore the amazing complexity of this negotiation and this issue with so many parties in interest. There's a tendency to simply go for a quick solution and I reject that. I can't tell you at this point whether I fully support variant one or variant two. It almost doesn't matter at this point if other parties are not prepared to consider those options. I think we need to have a better tenor of conversation than we've been having so far. You know, I read the first draft of CU's proposed annexation agreement and I was frankly They were asking the city to indemnify them moving forward if they suffered any further damage from floods for anything they built in the area. And I'm prepared to support that if the next time my crawl space fills up with water, I can send the bill to the city. But in the absence of that, I think that's an unreasonable request. You know, they were also looking for 24/7 access to ball fields, they sit next to a neighborhood, they have to be a little more neighborly. So within the context of the fact that we must provide some degree of flood mitigation, we need to restart this conversation in a more productive way, get everybody at the table and try to find something that's going to get us to that objective, still preserve to the extent that we can, sensitive habitats and species and move forward. I can't tell you what the timing of it is going to be, it's a very difficult issue, but we need to continue to work at it with the understanding that it has that level of complexity and difficulty.
Thank you, Mark. Corina?
I'm going to sit down so I can relax a little. So about the University of Boulder, well, I think the most important thing in this impasse that it is having with the city of Boulder, I think it's the flood mitigation to protect the people. I think that is the most important thing and that has to be the number one priority. There's an impasse now because they want to build housing and that's understandable because they have a need for housing that they're pushing into the city of Boulder. So I think for me, it's like flood mitigation to protect people is number one and also to protect the environment there. I think that is also important. So there's a valid difference of opinion and I think the best way to do, to take a responsible decision will be that both of them comes to agreement. And for me, for me, this is my personal opinion, it would be excellent if they can swap the land and CU can build their residence in the goal, of course. That's what I think, it would be great if they can sit down and come to an agreement and everyone is happy, you know, everybody's happy, so this is my opinion.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm going to stand up because I'm going to use a prop. Look at these six. This reminds, I don't know if these are, but this reminds me of... These are the seeds of creeds. Well, yeah, the Rocha test. Think of a Venn diagram, right, where you have circles, right, that don't quite touch or they touch a little bit, they don't intersect. So take six of these, this is the city, right? The city's interest is flood mitigation, okay? This is the city's zone of interest, okay? But it's not quite touching this one. This is the University of Colorado, right? They have an interest, they want to build some housing, some academic facilities there. Now, those aren't quite touching at this point in time. Now, if the property was owned by a private landowner, it'd be easy. We just condemn it, we take it, we do what we need to do, but it's the state of Colorado, so we can't do that. Then over here, you've got maybe some folks who live downstream, right? And they're the 3,500 people who live downstream and they're looking for flood protection, okay? And they have a set of interests that have a pretty high priority. And then these are the folks who live near CU South, right? And they're concerned about the traffic and the other impacts that may occur in their neighborhoods as a result of CU building what it wants to build. And then, of course, we have up there, CDOT. Now, CDOT has the highway, right? And they, we need to build a flood wall right next to the highway and they have an opinion about that and we have to negotiate with them. And then we got another circle up there and that's, we've forgotten, open space, maybe one of the most important. This is going to impact open space and we need to figure out how to mitigate that impact in open space and not only mitigate that impact on the existing nearby open space, but maybe actually gain some open space as a result of this. The university has signaled to us, they may be willing to take some of the 300 acres that are, that they own and either sell them or give them to us, that could be a benefit. So the job of city council is to bring all these six circles together so we can have a point of interest and a point of convergence. And that's our job and that's a job I'd like to fill if you elect me to another term. Thank you so much.
Okay, so Susan, you're first up on this.
Any phone?
I'm going to turn mine off.
No, actually it gives me a minute to think, so.
And let me remind you, if you came in late, there are blank cards circulating and if you'd like to fill one out with a question, you can do that and you can send it this way. Okay, so this is meant to be a rather open-ended question, but I'd ask you to try to be specific and not obfuscate too much. Here it is. What is your view of the city's financial condition? Now, there's a little more. As a council member, what steps would you take given your view of its condition and could you speak about current investments versus obligatory investments? Where should we direct the city's finances moving forward? Susan?
Thank you. I think most people who know me would say that I'm a pretty fiscally responsible person and my intent would be to continue our fiscal responsibility in the city of Boulder. Judging from the cars I see around the city, we're doing pretty well here. And yeah, we do hear that our sales tax revenue growth is softening. That doesn't mean that our sales tax revenue is going down, it means the rate at which it's going up is softening. That's a new market condition, not everybody shops here. Some people shop with our regional communities who, by the way, I don't think we should consider to be competitors but rather collaborators in figuring out not only sales tax revenue but job distribution and revenue distributions and how do we share open space and library space and all those kinds of things in a way that helps Boulder, that contributes to Boulder deriving some revenue from those shared resources and helps other communities to derive some benefits as well. I would also say that when you see a time in your life, like I remember back in 2004 when there was a softening in the economy and therefore there was a softening in my own personal income, a little belt tightening is in order. Some of the more luxury things that we can do at times maybe need to go away, maybe we need to bring brown bag dinners to city council meetings, I don't know. So I would take a look at some of the city programs with an eye towards how we can conserve. I would also like to expand some of our revenue base by inspiring some of the local private companies who benefit so much from what Boulder has to offer in terms of attracting and retaining good employees to participate in a more meaningful way in sustaining this community for them. So.
Thank you. Mark?
I recently went to a presentation on our city's finances, it was given by Library Champions, and I left profoundly depressed. It made me wonder why I'm doing this. We are in a period of some financial constraints. We don't have the liberty to raise the revenues that we would like for all of our aspirational programs and so at least for the moment, we're going to need to do some prioritization. And for me, obviously you start with public safety, infrastructure, open space, that's a particular concern of mine, and then we have some very, very valuable social programs that I really would not like to see cut. You know, the kinds of work that's being done by EFA and Bridge House deserve support and we need to at least continue the support that we're already giving them. We're going to have to find ways, whether it's reduction in staff or slight reductions in programs or determining which programs are not as essential for us, we may have to do that. Nobody wants to, I don't want to, but that's going to be the environment we live in at least briefly, hopefully briefly. You know, to the extent that we rely on sales tax and, you know, internet has damaged all of our brick and mortar businesses, it's going to be a little bit difficult to deal with that and to come back from that. But we're going to have to behave as every other municipality behaves to some extent. When times are lean, we're going to have to be lean. And that's an unfortunate fact of life and I hope it passes quickly so that we can return to being the aspirational community that we have always been.
Thank you.
So when we talk about budget, I think that it has a huge responsibility. It's like, should I go buy groceries or should I go to Macy's to buy a new outfit? So should I get a new car or should I get, you know, after school classes for my kids? So I think this should be applied for the city budget also, having, you know, the sale taxes that are, now our little businesses are suffering so much with these big companies, Amazon or whatever. So I think that we have to be more conservative with that budget. Maybe we are spending, overspending in things that we should not be spending much like demolishing places and, you know, which I think for me, the most important thing is a safety net, like for people to direct our budget to that. Education, it's also a budget for libraries, et cetera. So I think that we just have to be careful and we have to spend the money on the city wise, the people that are in charge of the money.
If you know anything about the telecommunications industry in the last 20 years, you know there's been a lot of ups and downs and ups and downs and I had the good fortune or bad luck to have gone through a lot of ups and downs in telecom and so I've cut budgets. I've had to lay people off, it's a sad thing to do and so I have a lot of experience with big organizations and how to operate conservatively and prudently within a budget. Actually, this, the question's really timely for me. I think many of you in the room subscribe to my monthly newsletter called the Boulder Bulletin and I actually wrote about this very point in Monday's edition and if you'd like me to send you a copy, I'd be happy to do it. We're facing some pretty stiff headwinds right now. Our primary fund, funding for the city is sales tax and our sales tax revenue over the trailing 12 months has only gone up 1.7%, that's lower than the rate of inflation. So we're effectively flat. The city budget that was released a few days ago is appropriately flat as well and I think we need to continue to be conservative. We've had a little bump on property tax because of raising values, we haven't raised the middle of your debt, it's only a small, small part of our budget. So we've got to be conservative and on top of all of that, we're facing recession. People argue about whether that's three quarters out or six quarters out. There will be a recession in this economy sometime in the next couple of years and recession means less sales tax, which means less to fund the city government. So I agree with all my colleagues to my right that I think we need to be cautious, we need to be conservative. As we were setting up chairs here before you all arrived, I was talking to Alan and Lisa about ways we might be able to look at this holistically and I think the three of us agreed that it's time again for a blue ribbon commission. Every few years, it's been 10 years now, I think, since we've had one, we need to have a blue ribbon commission that looks at this non-politically and objectively and talks about where our revenues are coming from and what we're spending on. If I could summarize the job of city council in one word, it'd be prioritization and that's our responsibility, prioritize the needs and the desires for our community and making sure that we're spending money on the things that you want.
Thank you, Benita.
Thank you. My answer to the question, what's your view of the financial condition? I would say relatively healthy but precarious, right? We walk a budget tightrope, like we always have in our local government. Since the time that I was a staffer of the city, I can remember that we always lamented about the fact of earmarked funds and how they tied the hands of, you know, general fund operations. And back then, it was around 50% and at the budget briefing that I was at recently, we're now at about 61% of earmarked funds. So that pot of money that is sort of under control of a city council is pretty limited and it has to be very, very strategic. And so when you look at things like sales tax rate, we are, you know, when you remove all the other special districts and authorities and everybody else's slice, you know, if we're at this place where, you know, we're aligned with Aspen or Manitou Springs and sort of the resort communities, so we really can't be bumping up against that sales tax rate. sales tax rate. I think that there's an opportunity through the library district and the creation of that to really relieve some pressure from that budget. And so one of my solutions and answers to this question is really seriously aligning support around this library district formation. You know, what, what it does is it relieves and shifts about $10 million out of the general fund, and the opportunity there to create that independence authority makes, makes all the difference. I mean, this is more than a library that holds books. It's become an education center and a cultural center for our community, and it is so important, and we all benefit from that. And so to just say library is probably, you know, short, short-changing the opportunity that we have here to really do something wise for our future and also align dollars that could better be spent in general fund expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you all. Mark, you're up. Sorry, it doesn't start with you. I was taking a nap. This is probably a good follow-up question. The final draft of the open space master plan shows a huge unfunded financial gap for trail and facility maintenance and resource preservation. As of 2020, open space funding will be decreased by nearly 30% with the sun setting of two sales, sales taxes. Um, skip that. The master plan also shows dramatically increased visitation rates, damaging impacts. How would you ensure the sustainability of our open space system with decreased funding and increased use?
Well, first, I certainly support the sales tax increase. I am committed to the proper funding of open space maintenance. To me, open space is the heart and soul of Boulder. It is the one thing that makes this city unique among all cities that I, that I know. And I am unprepared to have our prime asset and the thing that makes us so special diminished in any way. And, you know, the number of $40 million is usually used as the backlog for maintenance, but the number is actually greater than that. And in order to deal with all of the obligations that we have to restore open space, we may at some point have to consider some kind of user fee. And I say that advisedly and with some reluctance, because any kind of fee that you impose is regressive in nature, and it will affect people of lower incomes much more than it will affect others. And I'm not quite sure how you deal with that yet. It may require certain kinds of exemptions and qualifications, but we now have over 6 million people per year using our open space, more than are going to Rocky Mountain National Park, a national park. And it has become the recreational area for larger Denver, and it is being paid for by smaller Boulder. And I'm not sure we can continue along that path. So it's something we're going to have to look at quite seriously in the future, because I am committed to maintaining that open space in good condition.
Thank you.
So I think the open space in Boulder is the jewel of the city. It's what Boulder is known for. People that I know that have been visiting Boulder, it's like they want to go to Chautauqua Park, they want to go to hike, because they Google and they see, oh, they want to go to see all this open space. So I fully support the tax for open space that is going to be in the ballot. I think we have to preserve our home, and we should treat this as if it's our house, the same way that we care for our house, that we clean it, that we put work and money into our house. We should do the same with our open space, and at this, so we can preserve it for our future generations too. Another thing that I will say, that if I'm elected council, I will always support open space funding. And for an idea on how to fund this, I'm thinking that since we have so many visitors, and maybe it would be a good idea that when people go to, then use our open space, people that have licensed plates from different states, they're not from Boulder, can pay like a parking fee. I mean, any way that we can actually get some money for our open space besides bags and stuff, I think that would be one of the ideas I have, so.
Okay, thank you.
September 3, 2019, Red Letter Day in Boulder. On that night on September 3, two days ago, we did two wonderful things. We passed and adopted the very first open space master plan. That deserves a round of applause, right? Just fantastic. Finally, now our first open space master plan. And the same night, just a few minutes earlier, we also agreed to put on the ballot a 0.15% sales tax for 20 years, continue to fund open space preservation and maintenance acquisition. And I think that's fantastic, and I hope you'll vote in favor of that when it comes, your ballot comes in the mail in a few weeks. But it's not just about money and having a master plan. You asked the question about, what do we do about the visitors? Our visitor population has doubled in recent years, and I've, I've got four Es. Listen to this. Educate. You know, we've had dozens and dozens and dozens of trails, and everyone has their old favorite one, but we need to get folks dispersed off of the, the popular ones like Chautauqua and Cenitas that are really overrun, and educate people that there are some really cool trails out there that are not very widely used. Second E, eliminate. Eliminate parking at our popular trailheads. We experimented with that a few years ago at Chautauqua. It's been a fabulous success. We charge for parking. We have a free shuttle bus that takes people to and from. Let's continue to do that at other trailheads. Thirty, evaluate. We're going to have a big pile of money as a result of the taxing. You're all going to pass about $100 million to spend over the next 20 years. Let's continue to evaluate trails and put the maintenance money where it belongs. And the fourth is expand. Some folks are against purchasing any more open space. While I agree that our priorities need to be around maintenance and preservation of what we have, I would not want to close the door to purchasing opportunistically. I can think of a few, few properties I think it would be nice to have in our open space portfolio, and I think we need to continue to expand so we can disperse the usership across a broader acreage. Thank you.
Thank you. Benita?
Thank you. So I am supportive of continuing the sales tax and the ballot item that will be before us. I just want to clarify that it isn't an increase in sales tax, it is just a continuation of an existing sales tax, so no additional pressure on our sales tax rate. I also agree and would like to be thinking about those opportunities for other revenue sources and other angles that can support a program that is a legacy program for our city of Boulder. And one of the things that comes to mind that I've learned about recently is the Open Space and Mountain Parks Foundation that was just formed last year. So I think about things from that philanthropic end and that charitable contribution side of things, just given the work I've done and the foundations I've served on in my past. And I think they play a big role in the future in funding support for our Open Space and Mountain Parks program. And again, that relieves some of that pressure, again, on our, you know, full picture budget of the city. So let's look beyond that sales tax support, because those costs are only increasing over time, right? And so ideas related to the open space mountain park and, and facilities or support through philanthropy are things like user fees. I was reading recently, it was either Route County or Steamboat, but they have a, you know, a solar-powered kiosk, a credit card swipe, and you can just, you know, hikers can generously, you know, swipe that for a $10 donation for a hike, right? So why not? They raised an incredible amount of money, and I think it's a user-friendly way to show support for, for our trails, wherever you're from. I'd also like to see an opportunity for accessibility for seniors to be aligned with our open space, because I think of seniors as those that have been the early investors in our open space program. And so I'd like to see that we have and maintain programs that broaden the access and education opportunities for seniors to, to experience what they've invested in here in Boulder. Thank you.
And to...
So hold on to your chairs, I'm about to blow your mind. Because part of what I really like about running for city council is not only all the different people I meet, but all the stuff I learn, because when you're researching these questions, new information comes to mind, and you go deep down different Google rabbit holes. But I think one of the keys to preserving and protecting and paying for our open space is changing the way we value it. And we would change the way we value it by embracing something called biophilic urbanism. Has anybody heard of that? Of course you have, Evan. Biophilic! As, that means we're a part of nature, as opposed to biophobic. It's a new way of looking at things, and aren't we here in Boulder all about new ways of looking at things? So I'm going to read to you a little bit from this research report. It says, "Researchers are finding that nature in city remedies many environmental, economic, and social-psychological urban challenges. In response to those challenges, new approaches are emerging, biophilic urbanism. Too often," notes this University of Virginia professor, "urban greening efforts focus on everything except nature, emphasizing such elements as public transit, renewable energy production, and energy-efficient building systems. But as the human environment becomes increasingly urban, we need nature in cities even more." These approaches are key to shifting from traditional open space provision, natural area restoration, and ornamental landscaping to local ecosystem and habitation, habitat creation in urban spaces, from the balcony to the block and to larger districts, the city and the region. Green elements at every scale deliver emotional value, but they will also help to mitigate and adapt to climate change, shade, and cool urban environments, conserve water and, and energy, and produce some of our food. And if we considered open space a key part of our biophilic urban design, we would value it, all of us would value it, much more highly."
Thank you, Susan. And that is it for that question. Karina, you're up first on this question. The city is currently updating its transportation master plan. How would you ensure that the plan tackles Boulder's carbon footprint, and how should the needs identified in the master plan be funded?
Okay, so I've been riding the bus for many years, and I, I will say that RTD is a dinosaur. It's really, it is. You know, I've been hours that I've been, it's probably me and two more people riding the bus, you know, a bus that is intended to be for like 50-plus people. And so, one, one reason why I stopped riding the bus is because sometimes doing the Lyft share, it's, it's $2, it can be cheaper than riding the RTD. I don't have an eco pass, so a lot of people like me, that they go to Kinsopers and they buy, you know, this, the tickets, it's just, it's not appealing, what they're doing is not appealing to people, because the only way that people can ride bus versus driving a car is if it's free. I think it's the only way. I think that RTD is just not really delivering a fast, a good, effective massive transportation when they should be. I think if they will be willing to actually work with the city, they will help us to ease this problem of transportation that we have right now. And, well, if I mention the Fast Track that we know, that we pay 700, I'm sorry, 700 millions, and then we're still paying for this, I mean. And I think one of the ideas that I have is, the big employers, the big employers of this area of Boulder should be paying for eco passes, not just for, for their employees, but also, it's only 50% of people that are using the eco pass, so maybe 50, 50% more of the population that really want to use it can, you know, benefit from that. And survey in Denver reflects that the population is growing, and the raid, the raiders are shrinking, and the reason number one is the press. So, it's just one more thing. And then maybe if they're not willing to help us, I think that then we, we should look for other ways of transportation, like a smaller bus, the city can, you know, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, there's two parts to that question. What do we do and how do we pay for it? What do we do? I, I'm really excited about our bike and pedestrian opportunities here in town. I'm a big biker and walker myself. This afternoon, we're going to have the opportunity to cut the ribbon on Boulder's newest Green Street, 13th Street. I hope you'll come on and join us at 5 o'clock out there. And our Vision Zero program envisions a situation where there are zero fatalities and serious injuries among bikes and pets in our town. We've got to keep working on that. Number two, transit. I agree with Karina. Our partnership with RTD is broken, and I'm not sure that we can fix it. So we need to develop our own regional transit system in partnership with the L-Cities, with CU, with our largest employers, and fill in the gaps where RTD is unwilling to or unable to. And finally, cars. Some people still drive, right? And one of the things that we're going to be tackling here is a fiber optic backbone build that's going to connect the whole city. And one of the things that fiber backbone is going to connect is the 168 traffic lights, sets of traffic lights we have around town. So we can have a smart city, so that we can time our traffic lights to, to match the traffic and reduce congestion in town. How are we going to pay for all that? It's going to cost a lot of money. I'm not going to sugarcoat that. We're, on September 17, we're going to draft a transportation master plan, and on that master plan, it identifies that sales tax pays for 80% of our transportation budget, but we have $23 million in annual, annual unmet transportation needs, and another $21 million in capital backlog. That's a lot of money. It's going to take some money. And I don't know if that money comes from sales tax. I don't know if that money's going to come from a property tax increase. I don't know if that's a head tax, as some people have suggested, or maybe it's a vehicle tax, equitably. But we are going to have to raise taxes if we're going to meet our transportation goals.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I read through the transportation, the draft transportation master plan, and good to know it's on the agenda later this month. But here's one of the things that, you know, when you observe, when you're out there just in community, and it, you know, often is like, how people get from point A to point B. And I drive an electric car, and, and I know we all don't drive Teslas. I drive a Leaf, a Blue Leaf. And now I think everybody has a Blue Leaf, right? Because you see all the cars around, you say, good, everybody has a Blue Leaf. And for those who prefer to rely on biking or e-biking, walking, taking the bus, carpooling, we want to make it safe, convenient, and affordable, right? I mean, hearing from Karina and Bob about, you know, some of these issues, and practically speaking, it means that we have to invest more heavily in these options, right? And be more thoughtful about getting people out of their cars. And from what I read in that TMP, that's the foundation of that, of that plan. And so it's an excellent plan, and I just appreciate how broadened their group and their outreach effort is as it relates to, you know, sort of aligning values and, you know, with the lofty goal of being the best transportation city in the country. And, you know, that addresses social equity and addresses the climate action that we need. So after all those accolades, right, I say there's limited funding, right? And there, there are things that we need to do and some tough decisions to make. But I think that the idea of this county-wide transportation tax makes a lot of sense, and it's strategic, and it's timely, and we just have to get out of, you know, that RTD relationship and find the way to get some of those resources aligned with our county tax in a different way. A multi-pronged, a multi-pronged approach is what I'm advocating for. So in the prioritization of the TMP, the council knows that, you know, there's a direction that is led by the community and that has, you know, a very broad, balanced view and approach to be taken. So I, you know, really applaud the efforts and the direction that we're going in.
Thank you. Susan?
I don't know how I'm going to sit down for that long during city council meetings, because I get to stand up every once in a while. And I, I would be accurate to say, I agree with Karina. I agree that we should all have free local eco passes, because that's the thing that gets people riding the bus as much as we can. I agree with Bob and his deep knowledge of the transportation budget and the transportation net master plan, and that we need to come up with some better options, particularly within the city, maybe even looking at providing some of our own options like we do with the Hop. I agree with Benita, and I'll bet you I'm going to agree with Mark, too. And so I want to raise the level of discussion a little bit. Another new word that I've learned during all my research for this campaign is actually an old word that was originally coined by Buckminster Fuller. It's the word tensegrity. I talked a little bit about it on my website, but it's basically the idea that any structure that has tent, um, elements in tension on the outside, anything you do, like on a tent structure, that changes one of those elements is going to have impacts on the other elements. So to talk about transportation without talking about the relationship to healthy business, look at all those in commuters coming in, right? To talk about transportation without talking about housing density, wow, we need more housing because we've got all, all those in commuters. To talk about transportation without talking about traffic, we all experience traffic on a daily basis, is really difficult to do because those relationships are so closely intertwined. So yes, we need to do something about our mass transportation issues. Yes, I love to bike around town, because our network is so great, and we can make it even better. But yes, we need to look at it in the context of everything else we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you. Mark? Mark?
I think there are a range of issues here. Some are rather localized and small, some are global. Global one, of course, is, excuse me, our relationship with RTD, which is, in my view, dysfunctional and, and I would agree, well, I agree with everybody at all times, but I would...
Oh, I can challenge that.
I would agree with Bob on the need for a form of county-wide transportation solution so that we can not only provide a better degree of reliability in town, but also between towns, which will help us with our incommuting issue. There are other smaller things that I would advocate. We need smaller buses, at least during the unwashed hour times. There's nothing more annoying to me than watching a 40, 50-foot, 50-seat bus rolling down the streets with two people in it. We have to emphasize frequency of trips rather than having fewer trips with bigger equipment. We also, if we expect people to use our bus system, we need to make the experience a little more humane. We have some lovely three-sided bus shelters. You see one up on Broadway near Uni Hill, where there's some shelter and a bench, and it provides you a little bit of respite if it's 98 degrees out or if it's snowing in February. And we need to have more of those so that people are incentivized to actually move to public transportation as opposed to driving their comfortable cars. I would also, I do agree that we probably will need to fund it with a county-wide transportation tax because in the absence of that, I don't know that we have the discretionary funding to carry out these visions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for that. Brown, Bob, back to the starting. Okay, you knew this one was coming. Do you support the proposed Boulder municipal utility? Why or why not? Are you willing to put it on the ballot?
Well, I'll answer the second question first. Yes, absolutely, I want to put it on the ballot. Let me tell you why. It's no secret that I've not been a big fan of the Muni. Setting that aside, I respect the slightly more than 50% of the folks in town who launched the municipalization endeavor back in 2011, and the slightly more than 50% of the folks in this community who renewed that expression in 2017. So I think we need to fulfill the will of the voters and continue to go forward. We are going forward. However, a few things have happened since 2017, since the last time you all had a chance to vote. First of all, the price of renewables has continued to go down, and XL has gotten some religion. They're doing it for economic reasons, but it's important to note that they have stepped up their game on increased renewables, and they have a plan for getting us up to at least 80%. Is that fast enough and good enough? No, it's not. But they're at least moving in the right direction. And when they're economically driven, they're probably going to continue to follow through with it. The second is, we had a wonderful legislative session last spring. And our state, speaking about XL, our state legislature has mandated a step up renewables statewide. And so I think those two developments, I think, require us to go back to the voters and say, "Would you like to continue to go forward?" This municipalization endeavor has been very expensive, endeavor very time-consuming. You all read this morning's paper, we had another setback. And I think we need to check in with the voters and ask them, "If you felt it made sense back in 2011, does it still make sense to you today? If folks want to continue to go forward in light of the new information, in light of what's going on in the real world, in light of the legislation, in light of the setbacks and the costs, we spent $20 million already with lawyers and engineers, that's fine. But if folks want to take a pause and go a different direction and have meaningful and reputable climate action, we should do that as well." So it's going to be up to you. It's your decision.
Thank you, Bob. Anita?
I appreciate Bob's view, and I respectfully disagree because I supported and I voted for it in 2011 because I believed in that first vote and I educated myself on the issue. And I believe it's feasible, and it has generational and positive and far-reaching impacts. And I've continued to believe in that and supported it through the second vote in 2017. And so, yes, also believe that it's, you know, in 2020, when those numbers are calculated, that it's before the voters again. I know it because, I mean, and I believe in it because I think it's critically important to our climate action agenda, and I know that all eyes are on Boulder. And I applaud the council past and present who have led the effort. The newly seated council will have some major decisions to help guide in bringing the cost to the voters. You know, the headline in today's paper, "City suffers setbacks," and the story related about that decision of the court is unfortunate, yes, but, you know, we're in it for the long game. And there are no quick fixes, and I applaud, you know, the work that has been done by various other stakeholders to, you know, get on board with the climate action plan. But this is Boulder's plan, and this is, you know, sort of the direction and the will of the people that has led us in this way. So what is important to me is focusing more attention on community education and outreach, you know, starting as soon as possible. And taking a phrase from Holdren at the planned dinner a few weeks ago, you know, he said, "Every small step matters, and we lead by example." So we are leading by example here. And for me, I'd want to focus on broadening that community education process that shows people really how energy distribution plays out and what it looks like, and how neighborhood grids could be established, and how transforming, literally, that would be for community. And you know what? I want to do that in English and Spanish so that we know that we are really connecting with people and that people understand how critical this issue is to the entire city, the entire state. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Well, if you know me, you know I like a story. So I'm going to start this with a little story. When my son, Lucas, was about six years old, we were doing a summer road trip. We were coming back from Dinosaur National Park and heading over to Rushmore through Wyoming, and there's a coal train going right along beside us. And my son said, "What's that, Mom?" And I said, "Oh, it's a coal train." He said, "Well, where is it coming from?" I said, "Well, you know, it's coming from Wyoming." He said, "Where's it going to?" I said, "It's going to Colorado." He said, "What for?" I said, "We burn it to make electricity." He said, "Well, that's stupid." He was six. And that stayed with me. That stayed with me through renewable choice energy, where I had the unique opportunity of speaking with literally thousands of people, individuals in their homes, business leaders around the country about the importance of renewable energy. And I learned from those conversations that renewable energy and having our own municipal energy grid is one of those things that the Rocky Mountain Institute refers to as a solution multiplier. One thing you can do that has so many effects. Sure, we want to eliminate fossil fuels. But how about bringing some of that money right back here to Boulder that's currently going into the pockets of XL's shareholders and using it to the benefit of our community? How about creating social justice by making clean, green energy available to everyone in our community? How about using our natural intelligence to look outside and say, "We get over 300 days of sunshine a year, why aren't there solar panels everywhere?" So the impacts and the value, just like the value of open space is more than just open space alone, are incredibly multiplied in all different areas of our city. And I think we need to try to put a value on some of those areas, and then you'll find the accounting of Muni versus XL to look quite different.
Thank you. Mark?
I absolutely support the Muni. And the reason is, we tend to forget in Colorado what a miserable track record we have in terms of our reliance upon coal for energy. We currently produce 54% of our energy from coal, and that ranks us 39th among all states in terms of that dependence upon coal. For a progressive state like Colorado, that's disgraceful. And what we are now supposed to rely upon, if we abandon the Muni, is an unenforceable promise by XL Energy that they have seen the light, they will do better, and in 30 years, we will move to renewable energy. For me, that is too little, too late. And promises change. And if you don't think so, I invite you to take a ride to Denver with me on our imaginary light rail system. So I am, I am not prepared to simply rely on that promise as the basis for changing my support for the Muni. I also agree with Bob on the following point. Elections matter. Votes have consequences. And as a matter of respect for the people of Boulder who have voted several times to continue the effort to develop the Muni, to continue the process, get to the final cost estimate, and put it in front of them for their vote, I believe in the common sense of the people of this community and that they will make an appropriate decision on whether to go forward ultimately or not. But we have to put that in front of them. And in terms of the expense of getting there, I want to point out that those expenses are being caused by XL essentially laying down on the tracks and saying, "I'm going to fight you every inch of the way." So those are costs that we simply have to bear in order to get to the place where we want to be, which is a final price for the Muni and putting it in front of the public for their determination.
Karina, thank you.
I think that we need to think about the future. And for the future, I think that I, the municipalization project is excellent because we're going to be changing from coal to 100% renewable energy. So just to think about the impact in the environment, it's a yes. I think also that it would be great that Boulder takes over, and so this way, all revenues stay within the city and for the citizens, and we can use that for several problems that we have, like affordable housing and so many things. So it will allow us to have community aggregation because we can buy our electricity from any source we want. We can buy solar power from Wyoming. We can buy wind from other places, so it's up to Boulder to decide that. And I think, I will say that I'll support this, and I, but when it goes in the ballot, I think one important thing that we have to do is inform the people of this before, way before putting in the ballot. Why? Because people are going to receive that in the ballot, and I'm sure that, as it happens to a lot of us, sometimes we read so many things in the elections, and we don't know what is this about? And this is real. So I think that about this municipalization thing, we have to inform people. We have to really inform in any way that we can reach people. We can let them know what is this about, and so people can make a decision. And a good decision for the environment and for Boulder.
Thank you, Karina. Okay. I think we'll wrap up with two more questions, both related to housing. So this is the need up first. How important do you think neighborhood plans, area plans, and sub-community plans are? What would be needed to give residents of these areas a real input in the outcome of such planning efforts?
Thanks for the question. So I value the work of the city staff and the planning department in their, in their planning. And I think our planning process works. We pride ourselves in these processes that engage people, right? In neighborhood plans and community plans. But, you know, one of our guiding documents and sort of the overarching, you know, player in all of this is the comprehensive plan, right? The comp plan is sort of an anchoring document that all of these other planning processes and levels of engagement sort of align with and should be in time with and in, what am I looking for? In sync with the comp plan. And I think that people do have the opportunity to engage in those conversations at the neighborhood level and area level as it relates to processes. Where I've experienced some differences and some tension points is when there are those specific developments or land use changes that come forward, and it seems like our process isn't very clear about that in the, in the public arena. And it requires a developer or the landowner to take on a public engagement process on their own, right? And it, I think it definitely creates confusion and miscommunication amongst neighborhoods and community members. So I'd be advocating for a clear front-end role and rules of the game for developers about what's required of them for public process and engagement before plans and proposals come forward. Again, I look to documents like the master plan, excuse me, about the comp plan that helps guide those other processes. And I think, I think we've seen many, many efforts to date that have been working effectively. And I think community engagement is one of the important components that makes a program and makes a plan something that a community can embrace and the council can support through their action related to land use and zoning.
Thank you, Susan.
Well, you know, I come from technology. And in fact, I was just thinking, 12 years ago, when I ran for Boulder City Council, the first smartphone was just being introduced, right? Look how much that has changed the way we communicate, the way we shop, the way we talk to our loved ones around the world, the way we do business. And I think we have an opportunity at hand to use technology to more closely connect us, the citizens, to our government. We were founded on the basis of the people, by the people, for the people, and yet that's gotten a little muddied over the years with corporate influence and lobbyists, right? And so, using technology, and a great example of this, of using technology to connect people, neighborhoods, sub-communities to the city, is the survey that was done by a community group called ThinkBoulder.org. I'm not a part of that group, so I can't take credit for it in any way, shape, or form. But if you get a chance, take a look at that. They got over 533 responses, as I recall. Each, a thousand, over a thousand, thank you. But even at 533, it was a statistically significant amount. Each respondent was uniquely identified to their IP address, so you knew that people couldn't answer multiple times. It was broken down by demographics, so you could see what young people thought, what old people thought, what people who lived there thought, what people who didn't live there, what people who hadn't lived there for a long time. It was great information, and I would say every matter of public engagement should start with using technology to connect what you want to what we're planning on implementing in government. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
You know, sub-community planning is something we seem to talk about in theory, but whenever the rubber meets the road, we haven't done it. And I think we need to prioritize more sub-community planning so we can find out what neighborhoods and communities actually want. And what they want is going to change from area to area. There are going to be different tolerances for density, there are going to be different tolerances for other kinds of changes and programs. We need to know what's going on at the local level. I'm not suggesting that every community has to have a veto power over every decision in the city. Some decisions are of citywide import, but you have to start with what the community wants. It's got to be your initial premise, finding out what is important to each neighborhood and each community, and working from there. I think part of the controversy over Alpine-Balsam was I didn't sense that engagement process fully reaching out and ascertaining what the community wanted until organizations like ThinkBoulder rose up and said, "Well, wait a minute. You haven't looked at our opinion." Now, I'm not, I'm not saying that's the staff's fault, but there seems to be something broken in our public engagement process where we're not properly reaching out, we're not ascertaining what local desires are, and we need to do that. Again, not everything gets a veto, but you have to start with community desires and community goals before you make larger-scale decisions. And I would like to review that process and try to find a better way of doing it.
Thank you, Karina.
Well, I've been in a few council meetings, and so I have the feeling like when, this is a problem of miscommunication. So everything is start when neighbors go and they start complaining because there are things going on in their neighborhoods already starting, and they didn't know about that. So I think communication is one of the things that we have to work really hard. And it is hard. You know, people don't want to engage, sometimes people don't respond. And I think we have to formalize an engagement network. How do we do that? How can we get people to care, like people that, like you, that are sitting here, then you guys care for which are these people trying to be council? So you... So you came here and sit here to listen to what we have to say. But not everyone out is because people don't have time, because people have families, because so many reasons. So I think that I bring this idea from Peru, because I'm from Peru. And so we have a mayor, we have councils there. And what we do is like in each neighborhood, we have a sort of a leader in our neighborhood. And this person is the one that is, he's in charge of having like a meeting, like, let's say, once a month or once every two months. And he brings the ideas of what the neighbors actually want or decide in their neighborhood to the councils before they take decisions on what is going on, what is going to be built or rebuilt or zoning or rezoning in their area. So I think one of the ideas that I have is that to engage people to do this, maybe pay them a little bit, not money, but like prices, like if we are going to have this meeting, you know, we're going to give rec center passes or something that, you know, makes it attractive for people to engage.
Thank you. Bob.
The question was, how important are area plans and sub-community plans? I think it's our most important planning tool. It's how we get neighbors what they want in their respective communities. We have about 10 sub-communities in Boulder. Boulder is kind of divided up geographically. And a few years ago, we did create a sub-community plan in North Boulder. Lisa Morsa led that. And it's a great plan and it really works for those who live in North Boulder. We've now turned our attention to East Boulder because that's an area of likely change. It's in the opportunity zone, whether you like it or not, we're stuck with it. And it's an area where we think that there's some change will happen along in Diagonal Plaza and some other parts of East Boulder. So we're working right now on our second area of sub-community plan, which is East Boulder. You can hear more about that in the next few weeks. And then we'll turn to the third and the fourth. It takes some time, but it's very important to do. We also have something called area plans. Area is a sub-part of the sub-community. And while the sub-community planning has gone well, our recent area planning has gone badly. We, city staff has been working on an area plan for the Alpine-Balsam area around the Boulder Community Hospital, which the city now owns, and that has not gone well. The problem with that is there's been, I don't want to say inadequate, maybe inappropriate, community engagement. We haven't gotten the right people engaged at the right time through the process. And so I think we have examples of how community engagement works, examples of how community engagement doesn't work. It's okay that we have different parts of town that have different priorities. It's okay that some part of town might want some more density and another part of town might want things to feel more rural. That's okay. And that's why we do these planning and that's why we reach out to the community. How do we get better at it? Three words: listen, listen, listen.
Thank you. And we made the rounds on that one, right? Susan, here's one for you.
All right.
What is your view of the relationship between adding jobs and creating adequate housing for workers in those jobs?
I usually hear about balance between job creation and housing in the city. But when we talk about that balance, it seems like the only side of the equation we're talking about is more housing. There's another side to that equation. It's less balanced job growth. And maybe even balancing some of that job growth to our regional partners around us. It's a big, incommuting is a big problem, right? We have a lot of regions around us that people are coming from where perhaps some satellite offices for people who are based in Boulder would help to at least reduce some of that incommuting and reduce some of the need for housing. I am a believer that our jobs growth should pay its way. I mentioned earlier that one of the things businesses want the most is to attract great talent and to retain it here. So participating along with our community to provide good housing for them, affordable housing for them, is an important part of the commercial linkage fee. And I think perhaps looking at raising those fees to an extent that there is a greater ability to provide affordable housing for our workforce would behoove all of us, including those businesses. And I know I had another point. I'm trying to remember it. Again, with regard to the relationship between density and affordable housing, because it sounds like we're not going to get to that question, I wanted to mention that conflating affordability and density just ain't true. In a market where we basically have an unlimited demand for luxury housing, the basic laws of a free-market economy and supply and demand break down. And without putting adequate checks and balances in place to make sure that we continue to provide a diverse housing stock, not only for our citizens and our workforce and people at all stages of life, we're not being realistic.
Thank you. Mark.
If you look at the comp plan, it projects that we could add up to another 6,000 units of housing in Boulder before it is completely built out. And I believe this number is correct. We have a maximum capability of adding about 40,000 more jobs. So if you could imagine the impact of 40,000 more jobs, most of whom will not be housed here, commuting in on a daily basis with no mass transit. If you think things are crowded on 36 and 28 now at 4 o'clock, get ready, there's more is coming. So it is, of course, an issue of balance and finding the proper mean. I was privileged to serve on the advisory committee to the council on linkage fees. And we did recommend increases in the linkage fees. And subsequent to that work, they were increased again. They are now among the highest. The study that we used and relied upon to increase linkage fees indicated that the impact of each additional job was $129 per square foot. Now, I live in the real world. We're not going to charge $129 per square foot for each commercial project that is developed in Boulder. But we ought to be considering whether any higher rates are possible because we do have severe impacts coming and we need to mitigate them and we need to provide some housing for those people. We're not going to grow at 0% growth coming forward, but we need to modulate it. We need to control it. We need to get the kind of growth that is beneficial to this community and not just to people who are funding a development from out of state, which seems to be the flavor de jour in our large projects today.
Thank you, Karina.
Well, I think the responsibility to provide housing should be a mix of the city and employers. Also, the employers that bring all these jobs into Boulder. And employment rate is so low. It's so low that we keep adding more jobs, as you know, everyone is saying. I mean, this, we don't have a balance now. It's just so many jobs and the housing is just, the city can't keep up with this. We can't. And I think one of, I agree that the companies should... We should be charging them more higher linkage fees. And then so we can use this money towards housing. Now, I know that some people might say, "But if we charge more higher linkage fees, then, you know, people are not going to want to build here, you know, for offices." Well, maybe that's a good thing. Maybe they will stop building offices. Maybe that's what we need right now because we are in a crisis and we have to do something. It's just there's not enough housing here. And it's not just the city of Boulder that needs housing. It's also the university pushing the students for housing here. So I think that what we need to do is recover this balance. Is it possible? Can we do that? One of the things that I forgot to say is that about the opportunity zone, these developers that are going to come here, they should be paying 50% more linkage fees if they're going to build. And we can use that money towards housing. I think that's an idea. And then, you know, that can be a way that the city can be, can have some funds for housing, so.
Thank you, Karina. Bob.
Unlike a lot of cities, Boulder does not have to entice companies to come here and create jobs. They just happen, right? They occur here. And let's just use the numbers of Mark throughout there because I think their direction is correct. Boulder's current zoning would potentially allow 40,000 new jobs, but only 6,000 new housing units. So we're only getting under our current zoning. We're only going to exacerbate the existing problem. So how do we fix that? Well, there's a wonky thing called use tables. They sit under zoning. So every parcel of land in Boulder is zoned a certain way, business transitional and medium-density housing. But under that sits a whole set of tables that describe what you can do in that zoning district, okay? And those use tables have not been updated for a really, really long time. And we're not getting what we want. We're getting 40,000 jobs and 6,000 housing units. And that's not what we want. So we're in the midst of revising our use tables. It's really boring, hard work, but it's very, very important because we need to adjust that balance between jobs and housing. And you just hear, you heard, we worked on it on Tuesday night. You can hear more about it over the coming weeks and months. And what we're trying to achieve is by changing those use tables, is effectively rezoning those properties so that we have fewer large office buildings and more opportunities for housing and neighborhoods serving retail. Because I think that's what we want in this community. And then on the housing side of the equation, we need to continue to create housing. We've been adding about 100 to 200 units, mostly affordable housing, in this community. That feels like a pretty good pace to me. I serve on the board of Boulder Housing Partners and we work really, really hard to create that housing for our community. But it's not just about building new housing. It's also taking existing housing and making it permanently affordable. I'm going to put a plug in here for a little program that Sam Weaver and I have been working on the last couple of years. It's a middle-income down payment assistance program. So we can take existing middle-income houses that qualify and have families who already work in Boulder but can't afford to live here be able to purchase those houses. That's going to be on your ballot in November. Please vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vinnie.
Thanks. So similar to my colleagues here at the table, I don't believe Boulder needs to have a focus on adding jobs. Certainly other communities in the metro area and rural Colorado and, you know, my hometown of Pueblo needs this, but Boulder doesn't need this, right? We agree Boulder's an attractive, desirable place and we don't even have to market that. So I'm not focused on adding new jobs, but on creating the adequate housing for the workers in current jobs and in sustainable employment. And I'd like to see us focus on programs and targets that would focus on workers in the public sector in particular, city workers, county, fire, police, teachers, health care providers for us and our family members, childcare providers for our kids. I think having that energetic focus on that kind of target could really help us see a different lens of affordable housing or mixed housing and diverse housing. And it would really help us create more community and connections and relationships that would extend for all of us beyond the workday that somebody is here from, you know, nine to five. I'd also like to focus on seniors and senior housing. Aging in place is an important part of my agenda and finding the ways for us to preserve that middle-income housing stock and not think that everything is a scrape-off in our neighborhood. So it's sharpening many of those tools in the toolbox that can help provide adequate housing for workers and jobs that are here in our community today.
Thank you. Okay. Let's take a one-minute break. It's a bit time. Try to be concise and limit your responses to one minute. And Karina?
It takes longer than a minute to get to the bathroom, in fact.
Well, we leave it with Mark first.
Yes, I think I am.
Okay, let's go ahead and start and I'll repeat it for you. So here's, you can take another swing at housing questions.
Okay.
Do you believe that increasing the supply of market-rate housing will increase the amount of affordable housing?
Let me do this quickly.
Yes or no, but you can elaborate.
No. There is zero correlation between density and affordability. There is none, okay? That is not how the housing market works. Developers, when they build private-sector housing, gear themselves to the highest price they can achieve in whatever neighborhood they're working. There is absolutely no correlation between increasing market supply housing or market-rate housing and creating affordability. It doesn't exist. And every city in this country that has densified over the last 25 years confirms that view. No city that has gotten larger has gotten more affordable. San Francisco, New York, Boston, Washington, Seattle, et cetera. It doesn't. That is not a condition that is found in nature.
Karina, did you hear the question? I'll repeat it if you'd like. Do you believe that increasing the supply of market-rate housing will increase the amount of affordable housing?
Well, not in Boulder.
Hey, you can leave it there if you want.
Well, not in Boulder because, you know, the more that you build stuff here, it's going to be more expensive, it's luxury. Everything that has been built, I think, in the last years is just, nothing is getting cheaper. So definitely not in Boulder. I think, I'm going to add to this question. I think that one of the things that is vanishing, 30 seconds. One of the things that is vanishing from the city of Boulder, beautiful city, is a middle-income class, like, you know, teachers and, you know, nurses. I mean, all these middle-income class, we don't get any help from government because we don't qualify for programs. Like my family doesn't qualify for affordable housing because we're $60 over the limit. So we are struggling to remain in these apartments that are $1,500 a month. And these apartments are from the 70s. So if somebody comes and builds more stuff, I'm sure it's not going to be cheaper than $1,500 a month.
Bob?
So the question was, would an increase in supply increase affordability? I wish the answer was yes, but I think it's no. So let's do some math together. We have 60,000 in commuters. A pretty good clip for us would be to add 200 units of affordable housing in a given year. That would take us 300 years to create affordable housing for all 60,000 in commuters. And that assumes that we stay at 60,000. Apparently, Mark wants to add another 40,000. So if we're going to be, I don't know how we're ever going to catch up.
Oh, that's how this is going to go.
Down and garden.
So I simply don't think that, you know, I understand the laws of supply and demand. And I wish I could say, you know, if our gap was smaller, the answer would be yes. But our gap is so huge that unfortunately we can't. Now, that's not to say that we should keep building affordable housing and creating affordable units in existing housing. Because for every family that we create a unit for, whether it's a new unit or one that we've made permanently affordable, that's a family whose life we positively affected.
Thank you.
Wow. Can't add to that. I'm just going to say no to the answer to the question.
Then I guess I'll just say, I don't even know why we're continuing to ask this question because all of the evidence suggests otherwise. You know, I looked at the 12-year period since I ran last time just because that was an interesting period. And for the first seven years or so, the average number of units built was about 300. In the last several years, we're building over 700 units in the city. You all know that just by looking around at the cranes. And yet during that same period of time, rents have done nothing but go up. I wish I had a chart so I could go all Ross Perot on you here. But rents have done nothing but go up. In fact, according to the Colorado Real Estate Journal, rents on the hill increased 39% in Q4 of last year over Q3. Our median housing price has gone up to the point where it's no longer affordable for a person with our area median income. So the data shows that no, increased market supply does not create affordability. We need to put the checks and balances in place to make that so.
Thank you. Karina, let's start with you on this one. Defining community benefit is on the city council's work plan. Community benefit would be applied to development projects that ask for height modifications, for example. What are the community benefits that you support?
Oh, can you repeat the question, please?
Defining community benefit is on the city council's work plan. Community benefit would be applied to development projects that ask, for example, for height modifications. What are the community benefits that you support?
I think I will support community benefits that goes to target social. Like, one thing I think that is really important, like, I think, I mean, I was... thing I think that is really important, like, I think, I mean, I was reading about this, the homeless, the homeless population that we have here in Boulder. And I think that one of the things that we should do for them, this is what I think is, for me, will be like number one, thinking about people, it's to provide them kind of a sort of emergency housing, because we provide mental health and all these things, but if they don't have a secure place to go during the day or something, they won't recover. And I think that for me will be a priority to think about, you know, people that are in need, that they don't have a home.
Bob?
So here's how it works now, when a developer, whether it's housing or commercial property, comes into the planning board and wants to do something different, taller or less parking or whatever, it's a negotiation, right? And that's not really fair, it's not fair to the community and it's not really the way to do things. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to hardwire into our city code, community benefits, things that people can look at and say, if I do this, this, and this, and this, maybe I get a little bit of relief. So here's a list of some things, not exhaustive. Affordable housing, art, other community assets, meeting places, parks, reduce stress on the transportation demands that they're going to create with that new building, energy efficiency, adding to our library deficiencies or offsetting our library deficiencies. List every problem you think the city has, shortcomings, things that we need and can afford to pay for. Those should be our list of community benefits, those are the things that new builders of housing and commercial buildings should pay for to benefit our community.
Thank you.
So I have three things on my list and because I've been doing work in the past two years in the creative space and working to create a Latino cultural arts center, I think space to create is an important community benefit for artists, studio space and performance and practice space. So I'd like to see that kind of life in, in projects as a community benefit. And since we all know that I have a blue electric leaf, I would like to see electric car chargers as a part of, just a natural component as a community benefit in facilities and then nonprofit human service space. Space is expensive for those organizations that serve our community's greatest needs and I'd like to see space allocated for their officing and servicing.
Susan?
Again, I'd like to broaden the definition of what community benefit is and I'm going to read again from this article because I'm loving it. It says, "Biodemic approaches are key to shifting from traditional open space provision, natural area restoration and ornamental landscaping to local ecosystem and habitat creation in urban spaces. Green elements at every scale deliver emotional value, but they will also help to mitigate and adapt to climate change," community benefit, "shade and cool urban environments," community benefit, "conserve water and energy," community benefit, "and produce some of our food," community benefit. I would also say that throughout our city plans and particularly when providing community benefits, I would like to see us put more measurable metrics in place to say what that means. How many big beautiful trees do we have in the city and how many more are we going to make sure we plant and grow and not get rid of the other ones? We can count them, they are countable, for instance.
Thank you. Mark?
I have a narrow view of community benefit. If we have an affordable housing crisis, it seems to me the primary purpose of community benefit is to get more affordable housing and possibly more permanently affordable commercial space. Everything else to me is subsidiary. And I will tell you as a former member of the club that developers, if you give them a menu, will gravitate towards the cheapest options and provide community benefit that is least expensive to them, not necessarily what is best for our community. And in terms of energy efficiency, I don't think that's a community benefit, I think that should be a requirement of all development going forward. And there's nothing special that should be rewarded by providing an energy efficient project.
Okay, thank you. Karina went first. Wow. You're next. Many projects the city is engaging in seem to be addressing, how can we accommodate people who may live here versus developers who want to extract profit from the community? Which group is your priority?
Well, obviously, oh, that's a tough one. Obviously, our community, this is, this is our town, most of us were born here, but we came here, we've embraced it, this is our adoptive, for those of you who came here. And obviously, we have a duty to members of our community to make, to make sure this stays a good place, a healthy place, a happy place and to the extent we can, to continue to be welcoming to new people who come to town, just as many of you were welcomed into town five years, 10 years, 50 years ago. I think we need to continue to be welcoming to those community members and so we need to continue to create housing opportunities, whether that's new construction or placing limits on appreciation like the middle income down payment assistance program does, so that members of our community have a place to live as close to where they work. I don't care about the developers.
Okay, Benita?
As I said in my intro, I'm all about community and this is what anchors me to doing what I'm doing and sitting right here, so that's what I do.
Susan?
I would prioritize the people that live here, but I don't want that to be misconstrued is that I don't want anyone else to live here, because that's a common rhetoric that's out there on the campaign trail right now is that we who are already in Boulder don't want anybody else to come here. That's just flat not true. That's just flat not true. But what I would say that as people come to town, I would like the opportunity to work with them to understand the kind of family they're joining. So if you take a look at my website, for instance, I created a timeline of the legacy of Boulder, the legacy of the great inspirational visionary things that previous generations have done that should be inspiring us to do similarly courageous things for future generations. And I know many people in this room were involved with those things, like the blue line, like height limits, like our open space tax, all the way back to Frederick Claus Olmsted Jr. So I think we should take courage from that and welcome people into the community and give them a sense of what we're about.
Mark?
In terms of benefits, we're seeing an increasing phenomenon in Boulder where our projects are being funded and even built by out-of-state sources of funds or construction companies. The new project on, in Boulder Junction is financed out of New York, it is being built by an out-of-state company. The Park Mosaic on Arapahoe is being funded by financing sources out of New York. We have Goldman Sachs owning a substantial piece of East Boulder and so the profits from these developments will not be staying here, they will be moving onward. I don't think that's a healthy development for our community. I want to encourage, to the extent we have investment, I encourage local investment as opposed to making us a target for every financing source and investor from around the country.
Great. Thank you. Karina?
So, well, my opinion is that we live in Boulder and we have to prioritize people that live in Boulder first. So I would say that for me, it will like, we focus first in, in the problems that we already have here in Boulder, the people that are facing housing problems, in helping these people that are actually wanting to stay in Boulder, that are, you know, have families or have roots, that they are planning to stay in Boulder. So, so we focus on like the problems that I hear about the middle income housing or, you know, affordable housing. So I think that I prefer to, the investments to remain local, like if we can give the opportunity to the people from Boulder would be great rather than people from outside.
Thank you. I'm sorry we didn't get to more audience questions, but we do have to wrap up, so I'd like to give everybody...
Remember applause.
I didn't mean we were going to quit. Just we quit. My rules are, I was told, everyone gets one and a half minutes for closing statement, anything you'd like to say. Benita?
Thanks. So, thank you all for sticking through this and being a part of this, it is stressful. I think about a friend who initially talked about this and said, "Oh, you should do it because it'll be fun." And it's like, I'm waiting for the fun to happen. But I want to highlight five things that I'm about and, so that you can remember me. But it's about affordable housing and it's about aligning our resources and, you know, the goals, the targets that we have in place and just helping to move it along a little more efficiently and effectively and in partnership and in collaboration. That's what I'm about. Economic health and fiscal sustainability is a big piece of my agenda. Environmental, dealing with climate crisis and our municipal utility prospect, transportation, getting from point A to point B sanely and safely is important to me. And then the overarching social equity elements that are part of this. So five things that I'm focused on, I'm number five on the ballot, so remember me, okay? Thank you.
Susan?
So, you know, I started this city council journey thinking that I was running for city council out of a sense of civic duty. But over the last month or so, I've realized that's not it, it's out of a sense of civic pride. I'm really proud to be a part of this community. I'm proud of everything that previous generations did to make us such an attractive place and I want to be a part of moving forward into the future with the same kind of ethics, the same kind of values, the same kind of progressive attitude for the things that we value that maybe can't be valued by a dollar. And I would just like to say in closing, that over my 40 career, I'd have to say the hallmarks were my creativity, I was often called into a project just to give people different ideas. Okay, I worked with mostly male electrical engineers, so it wasn't too hard to give them a different idea, but creativity. Number two, tenaciousness. If I came up with an idea and I thought there was any way it could be done, I was willing to take one step at a time to get us there and to figure it out along the way. And I hope that I can bring that quality to city council. And number three, my employees tell me that I was always an inspiration to them. Inspiring people to courage. So I hope that's what I can do for city council. You can find out more about my priorities at susanforcitycouncil.com and, boy, I hope to see you around.
Thank you. Mark?
First, I want to thank Plan Boulder for putting on this event that was very substantive and it kept me off the streets and out of trouble for a couple of hours. I'm very appreciative. As I've expressed during this occasion, I have a few values that are very dear to me. One, of course, is trying to provide more affordable housing for our community, trying to find some new strategies to do it that don't rely exclusively upon inclusionary zoning fees. I think if we want to really create affordable housing, we're going to have to find better ways of doing it. And on my website, you'll see a couple of suggestions along those lines. I'm a fierce partisan for open space and its preservation and I am dedicated towards dealing with the effects of climate change and that's why I have my support for the muni. I have a deep love for Boulder, I have ever since those young climbing days and I hope to be able to contribute to the way we move forward into the future. As I've said before, we have some deep divisive issues here, I think I will bring a very common sense approach to those issues. I don't deal in slogans, I deal in facts and solutions. And I would hope to have that impact on the council and be effective in moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Karina?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for stick till now and listen to all our, you know, all our opinions that we have to these problems in Boulder. I'm really proud to be running for city council, it's been a steep learning curve for me and I, I would really love to bring all these ideas and perspectives to the council. One thing that I have to say is that I was really skeptical about me being able to come and talk to an audience in English, because my first language is Spanish, you guys know. And me thinking in Spanish in my head and translating at the same time, it is hard. And I understand how a lot of friends that I have feel the same way or even worse, people that don't speak the language and they can't even go have a conversation with the teachers of their kids at school. And I would like to have more affordable housing, but inside, so onsite, so instead of this segregation, being all together and grow and have different ideas and benefits from the ideas of others and grow as a community, as a beautiful community that Boulder is. I'm Karina and you can go on my website, www.karinaforboulder.com and I'm looking forward to be working for you guys. I, thank you very much.
Thank you, Karina. Bob, last word?
Let me close by touching on five areas where I'm proud of what we've achieved over the last four years and my vision for the next four years. Housing, we've created hundreds of units of permanently affordable low income housing in this community, I want to continue that. I also want to pass our down payment, middle income assistance program so that we can preserve existing housing for our middle income. Transportation, I'm proud of what we've achieved with Vision Zero and the Neighborhood Speed Management Program, but we need to find funding for all the things we talked about here this afternoon. Homelessness, I'm proud of the coordinated entry program we have, it's reduced the number of homeless people on our streets, but we need to continue that reduction, we need to get people into permanent supportive housing here in Boulder or to reunite them with family and friends outside of Boulder. Open space, I'm proud of the master plan we just adopted, now we have to figure out how to take that $100 million in tax you're going to give us and spend it wisely. And finance, I'm proud of the reserves that we've created to buffer against unforeseen circumstances, but we need, as we talked about this afternoon, we need to prioritize, we need to prepare ourselves for some headwinds. Regardless of whether you vote for me and regardless of whether I'm elected to another term on council, I just want to thank each of you for the opportunity to serve you the last four years. It really is the best job I've ever had. Thank you.
Join me in thanking all the candidates.